Me and Cole, automatic police caller.
Councilwoman Perkins-Adesti, Councilman Questa, Councilman Grover, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman Keenan, Councilman Sedano, Councilman Maza, President Ballmer.
I hear eight members present. The city council has incorporated Annual Meeting Notice 2013, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2012, and sent to the Star-Ledger Home News Tribune and complies with the provision of the Open Public Meeting Law of New Jersey. At this time, we have public speaking. Anyone from the taxpayer or resident like to speak on the city council in a matter of three steps forward, state name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Pia Carvajal. I live in Nineteen, D. H. Place.
And where?
Nineteen, D. H. Place, yes. I live in New Jersey.
Okay.
I am a mom. I have a child in a school, in a public school. I've been here, as a matter of fact, since I came to America. I've been here all my life. My gosh. Twenty-something. I'm not going to say my age. All right? But I had good memories about Elizabeth when I was in Peru. My aunt used to talk, you know, Elizabeth, you're going to go there. I was wondering what is Elizabeth? So I saw talking so much about Elizabeth. So when I came here, indeed, it was a great place to be. You know, so many opportunities for everybody, not just particularly one person. But last Friday, you know, I was particularly disappointed, sad, amazed about. I shouldn't be. My husband says, don't you know, this is the worst, you know? But he's disappointed too, but he just tries to tell me that I should be, you know, should be more, shouldn't get surprised so much. But what happened to Ms. Elsie Ospina? It's, I am a mother. My daughter is taking, she's being picked up from dance class right now. She's in Ms. Donas Academy. She danced there. She takes piano. I, sometimes I use a taxi, sometimes I use public transportation, but it doesn't occur to me that, you know, something like that is going to happen to any of us. Not, not just a woman, you know? Or my husband getting home from work at 2:11. He's a truck driver, you know? Or maybe I go to New York for the day with my daughter, and then I arrive to the train station when somebody breaks my face and takes everything and hits my daughter. I mean, I'm not expecting that to happen, you know? Or maybe my daughter is going to grow, and she keeps saying she's going to go away. More likely, she's going to go to some college away for New Jersey. That's why they all want to be free and independent, you know? And I want her to do that so she learns how to be a girl. But what's going to happen is one day she comes to a train station and whoever is in the way and took something extra, you know, and hits her and, you know? So I, I just like to know if there is any way. I know there is not enough money for police. I understand. I understand all the things that they could say. I do understand. But there's got to be a point where we could compromise, all of us, for the safety of your wives, your children. As I am talking, it could be any of your family or relative walking outside. It's not just me, you know? Any of you. That we need to say, we're going to do something. I could just come here, oh, how, I just want to get these people by the night. No. Maybe more programs? Maybe the people that do these things were, you know, I'm thinking, I, they were children at one point, and they just didn't, they weren't raised well. Or the parents were teens. What a child could teach another child. I had my child at 33, and I was still thinking, oh, my Lord, what am I going to do? I have no clue, you know? I was reading books. Those books were to spec, you're expecting, you know? I stopped reading them because I didn't have time, you know? Then you learn as you go. And my child, I say, is my experiment, you know? I'm still learning as I go. I'll ask all of my relatives, what do you do with this happening? What do you do? I don't know, you know? I just want to do it right. However, you know, we need to get involved. If I just put fingers, I'll be like, you know, like when they say to Jesus, you know, they throw, I don't mean to touch, to speak about religion, but, you know, the first one that has no sins throw the first stone. All of us, this is all of us, that all of us has to do something about it. I become very involved in BARTING and the Parent Teacher Organization in BARTING. Number one, I didn't, I'm going to say this through, because I have a child who's selecting, a child who doesn't communicate, and I wanted to know who's her friend. I wanted to know who's in the school. I wanted to know how could I improve that, you know, that the education level, things that were missing. And I'm leaving, right now, my daughter is in a school late. It's been five years, and five wonderful years that I was able to work with those families. Eight hundred and nine hundred, nine hundred families. That was wonderful. We were a team. Everybody did something. I always come here to get some information. There is a workshop here, there is this, there is a YSCA, there is a spelling bee. Do it. Work with your child. So BARTING is one of the schools that is the, where you could learn more, you could achieve more, because the parents, somebody is listening. You know, somebody in there is listening. So I think if we work, you know, we find a way to, to help more families in need, more teens that become parents at such a young age, to, you know, I don't know, to teach their children well, then we wouldn't have these people, you know, grownups, that feed the mains, that, you know, that do damage in the future, you know? Because I'm afraid. I'm afraid about so many things, but as much afraid as I feel, I cannot say I'm not going to go shopping tomorrow. I'm going to just close myself in my home with seven locks, and I'm just going to wait for my husband to take me places. The poor man gets home so tired. I'm not going to tell him at 10 o'clock, honey, I am so afraid. Take me to Fatmart, take me to, come on.
Jump right away.
Get, get real, you know? It doesn't work that way. And my child has to have a life.
Yes.
So I just ask for safety. Because Elsie Ospina, this is not politics. This is just a human being.
Right.
She goes everywhere. She worked with these families in BARTING, as you have no idea. Helped so many families in marriage disabilities. Any problem they could, she did. And I even worry, she goes all over Elizabeth. She does that. It's not fair what has happened to her. I am just very insanely upset. But I'm just, I want to say, I'm scheming for some kind of safety. Right now, train station, please, do something about the hours. These people come from work, come from Pennsylvania, from New York, from other states. They want to live in Elizabeth. They want to put their money in Elizabeth, New Jersey. We need to make them feel safe. We need to convince them to keep wanting to live in Elizabeth. Otherwise, they're going to go and put their money somewhere else.
Yes. I, you know, I'm happy you stopped in. Couple of my colleagues were having a conversation about that incident just a few minutes ago. And let you know that I believe now, that I will check on and make sure. Up at the train station, we had, had a sign, I believe, one or maybe two police officers around, two police officers around, the police up around the train station. And I'm just going to check to make sure that they're still there. I don't think they've been taken away for the safety of people getting off the train in the evening. And the other thing is, I want to alert you, and anyone that tend my block watch, along with me, is a police officer, and we talk about the safety of the residents in our community. And one of the things that we talk about, making sure that, you know, ladies, and you are a young lady. I heard you said you was counting up some years, but you're not that old. Don't travel, try not to travel alone if you can. And we talk about having as you're walking. I see a lot of ladies carrying big, skewed by expression, suitcases. And I hope you don't have one of those big suitcases.
I do.
Don't carry those big suitcases. Carry some small compact. And the one that, if you carry something, make sure you can carry on your shoulder and hang on to it. But, and also, one of my colleague also suggested that you can buy this pepper spray. I believe you can put it on the keychain, and if someone tried to come and take your car, you can maybe hit them with it, you know, and hope that, I hope it never happened. But you kind of caution yourself, don't travel alone. Get that little can, get a can of pepper spray. It'll help protect yourself. And especially when you're walking. Please, ma'am, don't walk alone by yourself in the evening. And Elizabeth, I believe, is on the right track of being one of the safest cities around. I don't have to criticize anybody, but you have to lose just as much as I do how Newark is, the problem they have over there, Camden, other towns around Patterson, I could name more. But we have had police officers that doing a great job here in the city. And you hit the nail on the head. It's hard to have a police officer exactly where you need him all the time. And I'm glad you understand that. Some people don't understand that. But you mentioned that, and I'm glad you said that. But we try to. But we're going to try everything in our power to make our citizens safe. We don't like to see anyone get hurt. We don't like to see anyone car damaged. We work hard for our money and our belongings. So we're going to do everything in our power to try to make it safe for you to be in Elizabeth, because we're proud to have you here. And we want you to stay here and raise a family. And you mentioned about your daughter. Have her, make sure she's with her friend. Don't, don't travel alone. Don't let her drive. I have younger grandkids and kids also. Make them have a companion, someone to ride with them. Don't let them drive alone. And even myself, when I get home at night, I'm careful around my surroundings. I'm asking, telling you the truth. When I get home in the evening, I ride around and look around and make sure, because people nowadays, they, they look on council people, you know what I'm saying? They don't care who you are. So you have to be careful of your surroundings. But any way that we can be assertive to you, let us know, and we're trying our best. And we'll, I'll speak to the police director, especially now at the shopping center, shopping centers, and also now with the shopping season upon us. So be careful. Don't carry a large sum of money with you. Don't, don't do that. So just be careful out there. Okay?
Thank you.
All right? Anybody else want to say something? Are we okay? Okay? But thank you for coming. And don't travel alone. I know you sound like, right now, leave your travel alone, don't you?
Yeah, she is.
Yes.
You got two police officers here? Got two police officers here?
Just one.
Just one?
Just one.
My husband will come and pick you up.
He going to come pick you up? I didn't want you to leave by yourself. I'm going to have him to go escort you to your car.
No, no, my husband will come.
Really?
He is, he's, thank you for my seat. No, no, I wouldn't. I asked a friend to drop me by here, and I'm not planning to walk. I really not. I love walking, but not at this time.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
Mr. President, Piera, Ms. Carvajal, anyway. What happened to Commissioner Elsie Ospina? Something, she was in the wrong place and the wrong time. Matter of fact, those two delinquents that came from Newark, they did a robbery someplace in Elizabeth. On our way back to Newark, they saw a luxury car with a lovely young lady in the car. Apparently, they figure, you know, it's a nice Mercedes, let's bang into it. They did it, and they, poor, she came out of the car. Apparently, she got beat up. But you could probably see more, but when the economy is bad, things like that happen. And that's why, good advisor from the president, don't go alone. Go always in company. That's why I usually tell my student, when you go someplace, always go by two or three at a time, because you never know. There's a group of three or four of them. By yourself, you're going to be, you know, beat up immediately. But if it's three or four of you group you together, nobody's going to take a chance on the same thing. You know, just be wise, and I'm sure that things will be better for the future when the economy is going to get better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. At this time, we want to thank you for coming by, and keep it to best. Go ahead, Councilor.
I just wanted to extend, I know we're being taped, to Elsie. Our best well wishes to her. It's a very tragic situation, as the councilman said. It's just a tough time of the year. Burglaries always go up around Christmas time. And it seems like being close to the Newark border doesn't help. But we here on City Council extend our best wishes.
He did.
I did, I did. I mentioned it. He was asking me about the pepper spray. I didn't mention that.
Yes.
I didn't mention that.
Yes, thank you. I'll get one.
Okay. Now, just a question. I believe now, make sure, I believe that might be an illegal one. That might be an illegal one.
Illegal too.
No, no, the bigger ones are illegal.
Don't get that one.
The small one.
Get the smaller one, yeah, get the smaller one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I will.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Councilor.
I just wanted to add, of course, you know, like, we're all saddened because of what happened to Elsie. And Elsie does a great job in the school board. And, I mean, she loves the city of Elizabeth. But one thing I wanted to ask, I know, of course, it's great to have pepper spray, but personally, if anyone, we don't want that to happen to anyone, but if anyone approaches your vehicle and tells you to come out, and they're armed, just.
Stay in and call, please.
Well, if they're asking you to come out, do whatever they say. Let them take the car. In my opinion, your life is more important than, and the truth is, like, even in that type of moment, if you try to react and try to spray them or something, you might aggravate the situation. It's just, life is more valuable than a Mercedes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Piera.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Any taxpayer, resident, like to address the council? In a matter of, none? Close this portion lead. At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session. We have a couple of closed session business meetings to take here. One moved by Councilman Keenan, second by Councilman Gonzalez. Go to closed session.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedano.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, P.L. 1975, Chapter 231, commits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the deputing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege, minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore, be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting. Here, Councilman Questa. Councilman Grover.
Here.
Councilman Torres. Councilman Gonzalez. Councilman Keenan. Councilman Sedano. Councilman Maza.
Yeah.
President Ballmer.
Yeah. Wait, 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 President. Okay.
You don't want to enter new business?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Letter dated November 25, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to obtain a policy with the Guardian Insurance through its agent of record, Willisum New Jersey, Inc., Maristown, New Jersey, for the continuation of benefits for group life insurance, accidental death, and dismemberment program for active and retired employees at a lower rate for the term January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2017.
That's right. Yeah, give another.
Just out of order.
You're out of order now?
That was the second item.
Yeah, the second item.
Well, it's first one and mine. I don't know how that's going to be the second one. No, the baseball is later.
No. How was your one?
I don't know why it's on top.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Should be on the bottom.
Okay, don't worry about it. It's fine.
That's right.
Should be on the bottom. So put it on the bottom.
Okay. All right, we'll just put it aside.
Okay. Letter dated November 25, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to renew the policy of IMED, the Eye Care Plan of America, Mason, Ohio, for Vision Care Program, covering the city of Elizabeth, Elizabeth Parking Authority, and Elizabeth Public Library employees, for the period commencing January 1, 2014, through December 31, 2017.
Question?
Letter dated November 25, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to renew the insurance policy with Fidelity and Deposit Company in Maryland, a member of Zurich Financial Services Group, Schaumburg, Illinois, covering the Fidelity Blanket Bomb for public employees dishonesty at an annual premium of $3,499.14.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated November 26, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts, LLC, Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works for the period November 25, 2013, through December 25, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any question?
Letter dated November 27, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to V.E. Ralph &amp; Sons, Inc., Carney, New Jersey, to purchase medical supplies and equipment, health education and training for various departments under the Middlesex Regional Education Services Commission Cooperative Pricing System, for the period November 30, 2013, through December 14, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $40,000.
Any question?
Letter dated November 27, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to National Terminal, Inc., North, New Jersey, for the purchase of diesel fuel for the Public Works Marina for the period November 1, 2013, through October 31, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Any question?
Letter dated December 2, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to register members of the Elizabeth Fire Department for recertification courses in the area of CPR, first responder, and EMT refresher training, and to utilize funds not to exceed $65,000 for the continuity of recertification courses for the Elizabeth Fire Department.
Any question? With this, Yolanda, I want to ask the administration, is it possible that, would they looking to see if they can train some other employees, especially here in the city hall, especially on the floor, for CPR? Is it possible? Yeah, because they got it to the fire department. I'd like to see if they can, because what happened with that young man that had a heart attack, and the one lady just looking as she knew or had CPR training, I think it's kind of saved her life. So I think we need to get other trained. And I'm talking about.
Should I just add onto that our senior centers and our recreation centers?
Okay, that's a good idea, okay. Yeah. Okay, and the senior centers.
And the recreation centers.
Yeah, and recreation. I know they're doing the defibrillator, but I think we need to add CPR also. Thank you.
Letter dated December 2, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Independence Constructors, Bridgewater, New Jersey, for cleaning inspections, monitoring of oil-water separators above and underground tanks at various locations, and Department of Environmental Protection compliance for the period December 1, 2013, through May 1, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated December 2, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to accept and sign all appropriate documents for the Union County Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Preserve Union County Grant 2013 for improvements to the Elizabeth Public Library as well as for the Elizabeth River Trail Project for an amount not to exceed $125,000. Matching funds are required for this grant.
Any question? Where you at?
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2014 state fiscal year budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any question?
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer, recommending that your honorable body request the Director of the Division of Local Finance to make the following changes in the 2014 municipal budget to account for the city's share of grants approved subsequent to the adopted budget. Matching funds, city's share from $1 million to $982,800, and local share, bringing Union County from $0 to $17,200.
Any question?
Letter dated November 25, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting to amend the resolution dated August 28, 2012, for the continuation of the Elizabeth Municipal Alliance Program for the sum of $77,856, specifically to authorize proper city officials to submit, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the extension of the 2013 grant term until June 30, 2014, in the amount of $116,784, contingent upon meeting the 25% cash match and 75% in-kind match grant requirement for the extension funding.
Any question?
Letter dated November 27, 2013, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting permission for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Kean University for the purpose of providing students eligible for the federal work-study program to perform work-related duties at the SOAR program at no cost to the city.
Question?
Don, do you know the ages?
I don't know. I think they're university students, but I'm not 100% sure. I can get you that age.
Letter dated December 2, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Simpson &amp; Brown, Inc., Carrington, New Jersey, for the Elizabeth Municipal Marina Rehabilitation at a cost of $2,334,890.96. 90% of the allowable construction costs will be reimbursed by Keenan.
Any question?
Hey, Don, is this, is this the area? I see them doing work down there now. So is this the second part, the second phase of?
I don't know that you could classify it as the second phase in a linear project, but this is just the Marina work at this point.
Okay, no, but what I was talking to the director, he basically told me that it's going to be done in like three phases.
Yes. This is definitely the next phase. I, it's not an offense. It's phase two. The urgency behind this is the intention is to go out to the big, well, I'm sorry, I take that back.
Okay.
Letter dated December 2, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide environmental consulting engineering services for the remedial investigation and remediation program at various city-owned facilities at a cost not to exceed $1,125,500.
Any questions?
I do, Mr. President. We could find out exactly what needs still to be done at the Front Street Soccer Fields, Football Fields, because those were built back in 1998, and went through a series of environmental assessments then, and then a couple of years ago, we did the whole place with the turf. I'm trying to figure out what needs still to be done from the environmental standpoint. Just for that specific location.
What else needs to be done?
Mr. President, can we also find out, as of today, how much money do we spend in that particular site?
For?
From 1998 until whatever. I know you were counseling.
Four million.
Four million? You sure it's not more than that?
That's the numbers that we have, that I remember.
If you find any additional money someplace.
No, we bonded, we bonded two and two.
Oh, you bonded two and two. All right. So there, let it go.
We okay?
Fine.
Clear.
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Mazur Consulting, PA, Red Bank, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services for the design and construction management for the Erksole and Pool renovation project at a cost not to exceed $288,600.
Any questions?
Clear, Mr. President, we need to get them started so we can have that pool going for the summer.
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number One final for the contract awarded to Hatchmont-McDonald for the construction management services in connection with the Third Avenue Flood Control Project at an original cost of $252,000 to provide additional professional engineering services at a cost of $21,000 for construction management services, totaling, raising the total contract amount to $273,000.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, Councilman Doherty?
Mr. President, my understanding is that most of the work along Third Avenue has been completed, but they were supposed to be waiting for DP's permission to build sort of a detention basin along waterfront. And I was told, the last time we had this conversation with Director Bepetti, that probably expect that they receive those approvals within the next couple of months. I just want to know if we've gotten anything on that.
You want to know how close they are?
Yeah. I know it's a long process, but that would really kind of, once we get the detention basin built down there, then definitely that flooding will be covered.
The council will update on that.
Okay. Is there about update on that, Don?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of Contract Amendment Number One for the contract awarded to Hatchmont-McDonald to provide professional engineering services in connection with the Hurricane Sandy Disaster Recovery Public Assistant Program at an original cost of $75,000 to provide additional professional engineering services on a time and material basis for actual time and expenses spent at a cost not to exceed $120,000, plus reimbursables for a total amount of $195,000. 90% of the allowable cost will be reimbursed by PMI.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 3, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of Change Order Number Two final, which represents the final closeout for this project awarded to PM Construction Corp. for the Third Avenue Flood Control Project at an original cost of $1,617,600 to provide further for the final quantity adjustments, which represents a decrease of $23,309.36 for the final contract price of $1,905,730.29.
Any questions?
I love that one. I have two of the last ones. Yeah, that's what I had, three of the last ones. I have two of the last.
That's what happened in your package. Okay.
I have two of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't get this last one, Yolanda.
Okay.
Good?
This, just so that the public knows, normally change orders never exceed 10% of the original contract price, but from what I recall, under the Third Avenue roadway there, there was a lot of swamp stuff underneath there that nobody anticipated, and that's why it's went so hot.
Got it. Once we'll see.
All right, letter dated November 30, 2013, from the Elizabeth Fort Little League, Elizabeth, requesting permission, tendering to a contract with Advanced Athletic Services to improve the playability of the infield pitcher's mound and home plate batters catcher's boxes, and for the city to provide base play, removal and disposal of excavated turf and old clay, relocate existing sprinkler heads to new locations, supply and apply red dust for the warning, the warning track area, rebuild the rear boundary fence located in the left-hand corner of the property.
Did you just remake that? You know, a couple of years ago?
It's been a while.
A while?
But they got these grant, they got grant money, so a lot of this is going to be paid for through this grant money. The city's not really, the city, what they're asking, I think, is just for what we normally do to all Little League fields.
Yeah, got it.
So I don't think that's a problem. I think they just want permission to bring this outside company that they're hiring, paid for by them, to improve the Little League, and I don't, unless the Councilman has any problem with it, I don't.
No, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
And then what if something was wrong? Who would be responsible? Well, I think, I think that's a good point, Councilman. I think the response to that is that they should at least allow our Law Department to review whatever contracts they have with this company. I think that's a, that's a fair.
These are not public funds that are being used for this?
No, no, it's private funds.
Private funds.
But I think either way, it's our, it's public property.
Right.
It's kind of one of these little, it's kind of works. But I think.
Can I make a recommendation, obviously subject to your council approval? I think that the right way to handle this is to send it back to the Department of Recreation. I shouldn't say send it back, because I don't think the Director's seen it. Send it to the Department of Recreation and have them analyze, evaluate, and if necessary, make recommendations then to your Honorable Boddy.
I kind of concur with that, because I'm kind of the same way, I read it.
Man, I like the fact that they were, they had 23 grants.
No question. I like that, it's a way you.
But since it's public property, we don't want them to put something in there, a kid gets hurt, and then we get served.
Well, you're served.
Exactly.
So, well, yeah, Councilman.
Mr. President, I think it's a good thing, because I remember years ago, I had some private contractor that would like to fix and upgrade O'Brien Field years ago, and the city did not give it the okay.
Okay.
So you want to tell us?
No, wait, we're just going to hold it. We're going to refer it back to the.
There's no rush, I mean, because baseball's not till April.
There's no rush, so, Don, take this back, give us a little data about legalization and all that.
Okay. All right, then we're going to put back on the agenda the loading or no parking in front of School 51 to delete the 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM from the ordinance that was voted upon.
Pre-what's that?
Uh, the, what is it?
Sorry.
The pre-K?
It's the pre-K, Donald Storey. That's right. Like, it's along Pennsylvania.
We're amending the ordinance.
Pretty much whether the passing was. I'm sorry, that's wrong.
That's okay.
I thought you were looking at me.
No, no, that's not you.
Just so that my colleagues know, the Traffic Department, they have recommended for there to be no parking from 7:00 AM to 9:00, and also in the afternoon, 2:00 and 4:00. But the real problem is the afternoon, it's not the morning.
Right.
And there's, but I wasn't here the initial time, so I wanted to amend it during the first reading, but it was recommended for it to go through, simply just to get the ball rolling. But we just want to make that change, so, thank you, Yolanda.
Okay. Your call, boss.
Okay. Now, to remove from whole the contract with Louis Barbado Landscaping, Old Brook, New York, for the purchase of 200 honey locusts and pin oak trees.
Let me just explain to you briefly with this contract. Unfortunately, the trees have always been planted.
Oh.
Unfortunately.
That's not true, though.
But, the good part about it, the good part about it, as you know, we talked about the pin oaks. The pin oaks were not planted by curbside. They was all planted in the park. Remember when Hurricane, Sandy came through, I mean, it destroyed trees in Calhoun Park, Conover Park, just by every park that I can think throughout the city. So what they did, all those pin oaks, they put in the park. They did not put them curbside, but the honeysuckle, locust, that's where they placed them at. However, I instructed the Public Works Director, make sure they do not, that does not, does not happen again. Make sure they give the information to us first, so we can review it, because we go through the counter with the court, by the trees, and he assured me that we would. So we'll be able to see the next bunch of trees before, first, before they plant, okay? So that's an effort correct. But right now, the tree that we're going to be placing on the agenda and approved always have to be planted. And to give you an accurate count, I told you, give me an accurate count, 60 of the pin oak went into the parks, and I believe the rest of them went in, the honeysuckle or locust went on the curbside.
So what's the one on the curbside, has he given you some information about whether or not the root structures?
No, they will not obstruct the sidewalks.
Yeah.
But the pin oaks would. Yeah, the pin oak would.
Well, that was my concern.
That was, right, everybody concerned, and I kind of explained to you before, they do give off just a little bit of those little locusts, they're not edible, but they're little locusts, like.
Berries.
What do you call it? And only time they really produce a real substantial size is real dry. Other than that, they're just real tiny. And they give you shade the same as their little leaf linters that we talked about. But I told you, that's what we really want, and that's what we're going to try to get the next time around. Okay? Okay? Good enough?
That's it for me.
I got two, I'll give you one.
Yeah, you already planted. In the ground.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, since we had closed session, what's your round? Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for City Council support in increasing the smoking age limit, age to 21. You know, studies show, I have a study show that between the ages of 18 and 21, kids get addicted to nicotine. And, you know, I truly believe that if we increase the age, you know, it reduces the possibility of lung cancer and getting these youth addicted to. So I'm asking for my colleague's support on that. I need help pushing that. Secondly, on Trumble and First, right next to Martin Luther King, there's no signage up there. It's just kind of difficult, because it's a commercial slash school area, so I'm getting several complaints from residents and teachers that work there. I wonder if we could add some type of signage where it says, "School Zone." We don't even have a speed limit down there, you know, some more signage. So I think maybe we could talk to Lieutenant Marcus to get some more signage down there. Third, I would like to give an accommodation to Jerome Murphy from the Washington Redskins. He was nice enough to come down last Tuesday and donate 200 turkeys, and take pictures with the kids and sign autographs, and so I would like to, Yolanda, I'll give you more information later on that. And last, but not least, I'm inviting council, December 15, the Packers are having our fifth annual banquet. I can't believe it's been five years already. It's going to be at the Renaissance. All are welcome.
What time?
Three to seven.
Sunday.
It's a Sunday, so, you know, I have a table for you guys, so all are welcome. And, you know, basically, we just reward the kids and give them out, give out trophies and certificates and stuff.
That's what we're selling, right?
Correct. If you guys can make it. That's it, Mr. President.
Good thing. Councilman Kip.
Pass.
Pass, Councilman Doherty?
I have two issues. Well, first of all, let me ask the Law Department, the issue that Councilman Torres raised about trying to raise the age to purchase cigarettes and smoke, is that something that City Council can impose, or is that something we'd have to request the state to do?
I think that we'd have to research it, but I think there may be a problem there, because they're adults at 18, and I'm not even sure the state can. I'd have to look into that. And I understand, I agree with the Councilman.
I like the idea, it's just I don't know if we can do it, that's my question.
Yes, and I'm not, I don't, I have some doubts in my mind, and I'd have to look into that.
I have issues regarding driving. Yolanda, I'd like, if you can, I'd like you to send a letter to our representatives at state level. I've come across situations recently where I think that the state is basically issuing laws that are contradictory. We have a law on the books under our Title 39, which is the Motor Vehicle Statute, which says that nobody can drive on the public roadways without having insurance, liability insurance. Okay? But yet, at the same time, there's a law that says that you can purchase what's called a dollar-a-day policy, which means that you can have, I guess, insurance for purposes of this, of Title 39, but the reality is, they have no coverage. Okay? So I think there's a contradiction, and I think that Senator Lesniak, Assemblywoman Kehan, and Assemblywoman Kryin have to really look into this, because I think we got laws that are contradicting one another, and I think it has to be squared away. Personally, I think that in today's economy, the expenses of injuries, I believe the statute says that you have to have a minimum of $15,000 liability policy, which I think is extremely rough, and these dollar-a-day policies have zero liability. So I just don't understand how people can get away with having dollar-a-day policies and still be in compliance of Title 39, which requires you to have liability insurance. So that's something I think our state legislators have to look into, and make modifications to the state statute. The second thing, just so that council is aware, I don't know, did you give a copy of this California statute already, Yolanda?
No.
You did? Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to ask Yolanda to make a copy of this for everyone. If you recall, after 9/11, our governor at the time, James McGreevy, decided to require anyone that wanted a driver's license in State of New Jersey, they had to get these six points, magical six points. And basically, what ended up happening was individuals that were not legal in this country were unable to get a driver's license, which is fine. I don't know what the purpose of it was at the time, because guys that ran into the Twin Towers with the airplanes were all legal in this country, but he felt upon himself that that was something that had to be done, and because everyone was emotionally scarred, I believe that the state legislator went away, ran along with it. The reality is, a lot of these folks went to other states to get driver's license. The reality is, there's a lot of people out there driving without driver's licenses, and I think as a result, our state is losing money, because there's no licenses being applied for, and we're finding a lot of people are violating the law. In my own practice, I've noticed a lot of people drive without licenses, causing accidents, and there's no recourse for the person who's the victim. So in California, a governor at the time passed a statute on October 3 of this year, allowing for individuals to obtain driver's licenses, and nobody is to question them as to their legality in this country. They go in, they apply for a driver's license, as long as they pass everything else that they're supposed to do in terms of knowing how to drive and all the tests that are required, and both the written and the driving, they can apply for a driver's license. They passed this in California, like I said, in October, and I want everyone to have an opportunity to look at the statute that was passed in California, and I think that I'd like to ask all of you to consider at a future debate to send a resolution to our state legislators to look into this also, and possibly pass a similar law at our state level, because what's going on right now is totally insane, with the amount of people that are driving in the State of New Jersey, either without a driver's license and just risking it, or with a driver's license from another state. And as a result, they don't have the proper insurances, and people that are being victimized, who are getting into accidents with these folks, have no recourse. So I think it's something that the state has to revisit. I mean, maybe at the time, in 2001, it was something that was dear to everyone's heart to create these restrictions, but I think we're beyond that now, and we have to really look at the ramifications that have occurred as a result of it. So, Yolanda, thinking you've ever wanted a copy of this, and then maybe in two weeks we'll talk about it again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just add something on that, on that topic. There's a lot of organizations and churches, too, that work with people that are trying to build up their life, that they were either homeless and just struggling, just trying to get up on their feet. And I know even personally, I've gone to motor vehicle with a small number of them, and there was no way that they had the six points. As much as we were trying to get them the license, you know, they didn't have an old license or a passport or anything else. license or a passport or anything else. So it was really pretty much impossible for them to get it, which was really frustrating. So I just wanted to express that's another, you know, pretty much group of people that are affected by that, so. Thank you.
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President. I, when I came from Italy, I had to show proof that I had residency requirement before I applied for a driver's license or for a permit. And, and I had to go through so much suffering and pains to learn the English test, and finally, after so many attempts, I was able to get my license. Unfortunately, in Elizabeth, we have hundreds and hundreds of cars who are pledged from New York.
Pennsylvania.
Virginia, Pennsylvania, parking on the street. Apparently, the law clearly stated, I think, after seven days, you're supposed to change or have a pledge for the state that you live in. So if a person resides more than seven days, he or she is in violation. It would be very hard, I mean, it would be very hard to enforce, but that would be a good revenue by raising money to our city, in, in a way of going after those people that, hey, if you live in New Jersey, you wear, you go play, you go get the pledge from New Jersey. If you don't, go back to Pennsylvania, go back to New York, go back to, you know, Virginia or whatever. Some of them, all the hands of the good side of Councilman Sodano, there are people that are illegal inside this country, and the, you know, the only states that are allowed to get their cars is certain states in the, in the Union, and of course, once they go there, they also be able to pick up the license and, and be able to drive in New Jersey. Well, when I go back to Italy or European, I used to re, apply for a AAA license that was, you know, permissible for me to drive back into Europe for so many days. Many times, the law allows that if you have a license, a recognized license from the state of New Jersey, as long as you have a translation in Italian or in French or whatever, they allow you to drive to remaining up to ninety days, as long as you stay, you know, as a tourist, as a visitor. Anything longer than that, then you're in violation. I'm sure, I don't know, I missed your conversation at the beginning. Is California allowing people to get a license without residency requirement? Is allowing people to buy cars?
It says the bill would require the Department to issue an original driver's license to a person who is unable to submit satisfactory proof that the applicant's present in the United States is authorized. So you get a driver's license, you don't have to show proof.
Proof. We definitely nip trouble, but like I said, it needs to have the legislative to come up with something and look up to it, and at the same time, you know, it's a, it's a revenue-making to all parts of the state, especially in today's article in Stat Ledger, the, the New Jersey Treasury Department, they didn't collect any money, so for next year, they're gonna fight with the, with the city to give less money, let's say, to Elizabeth, to Jersey City, to Urban City, at the expense of because the state, they don't bring any revenue inside. So something to really digest, as the Councilman Robert mentioned before, is something that needs to be done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Councilman, question?
Yes, yes, Mr. President, very, very briefly, a couple of issues. First, I had a question for the city clerk. I was wondering why she reads a statement, I think I know why, but why she reads a statement regarding the fact that we're going into a private session and the public is excluded? I'd like to know the reason why that is read.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement, right. So then you support it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next thing, Mr. President, I know she left already, I believe, but I wanted to commend Mrs. Carvajal, right?
Yeah.
For coming here, representing the PDA from Baton, Baton School. I think it's really commendable that she came to speak on behalf of a board member, Elsie Espina, who has been on my mind for the past few days, because unfortunately, she and I had similar experiences. In my case, it was years ago. And, and I agree with Councilman Grob, I think we, we should, we should, as a group, let her know that we're thinking of her, and, and we're hoping for a speedy recovery. But I wanted to emphasize the fact that Ms. Carvajal came here, and to me, that is what citizenship is all about. One of the things that I see lacking when I come to meetings, and I was really happy to see her here and express her views and her opinions about safety issues and concerns for our city. Anytime a citizen, a citizen steps forward and, and does that, it, it really makes me happy, because I think that, that more people should, should do those things. Sometimes people forget, they think that as city council members, as city fathers, you know, we are the only ones responsible, and, you know, in a democratic society, I don't wanna go too far here, but in a democratic society, the citizenship, the citizens have a duty and obligation as well. So I was really happy, and I commend her for, for being here. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Sodano?
Just a couple of things. If we could get the latest updates on Interbike and also Oakwood Plaza?
Sure.
No, I'm asking. You said sure, and I was like, ah, there's not much more to that question.
I'd need to get back to you on both of those, Councilman. As you know, Director Reyes left, and so the, the status of those projects, although I'm sure there are answers, I have to look into it, so.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, great. And, I mean, you could, if it's something right now, just give a copy to all the colleagues, so they can.
They'd be happy to.
And the last thing, same with Councilman Torres, how he had a football player that came out to the first ward. We had in the fourth ward, Muhammad Wilkerson, and just, I'll provide information to, just to commend him and his family. They came and they blessed all the families in Oakwood Plaza, which was really nice, I mean, for him to be able to take that time. And there was a lot of support from his family. His grandmother still lives in Oakwood, too, so it was, it was like a little family reunion there, too, so it was, it was really nice, and just wanted to officially recognize him, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to wish Commissioner Espina a quick and speedy recovery. I know we've been so sweet up for probably close to twenty-five years, we used to work together, a long time ago. So, and I didn't find out, unfortunately, until today, when I spoke to Ms. Carvajal, and she was the one that informed me that she had been in this tragic incident.
It's been inside out, you gotta read every.
Well, I've been a little under the weather lately.
I know that.
So, but I, you know, we just wanna wish them, wish her a speedy recovery. Mr. President, a short while ago, I requested Traffic to look at the intersections of Rowway and Almora Avenue and Almora and Edgar Road, to see if we can make some improvements there at the signals, to see if we can put a turn arrow there or a delayed whatever. In fact, the intersection of Edgar Road and South Almora Avenue already has a delayed sign. If you look up onto the right, you see delayed there already. Traffic Department was very diligent, Lieutenant Marcus, in following up with this, and got in touch with the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation in turn contacted us, reached out back to us, and I'll read in part what they responded, because I need to know, where do we go with this? Their response was, and I'm gonna shorten this, there are certain municipal requirements in undertaking such projects, such as ensuring costs or providing resolutions of support, and that includes commitment by the municipality to pay twenty-five percent of the costs initiated with the operationally-based electrical construction projects.
They looking for us to?
Yeah.
They're looking for us to foot.
To make a commitment to that.
Pass a resolution.
And again, one of them already, and I don't know who put the sign up. I can't say if we put it, the state put it, I would think the state put it up, because the, the city wouldn't put it up on the state road.
Right, right.
And I would think they put it up. But the, you know, they put the sign up, but they never actually are making it work as a delayed green on that case. And then in the other case, we just wanna see who we would forward this to, to see how we would proceed in this matter.
Pass it up to Public Works, as I said, to Public Works. Public Works, let Public Works take a review it, and also along with the Law Department, because not, Public Works would be involved with the signage, doing that whole nine yards. Okay, so that's what Josh Japan does. So I would say forward it up to Public Works, and let Don and the Law Department follow up along with that, because it looks like they want us to pass a resolution, that's what it sounds like.
Right, that's what they want, a resolution, a commitment of support, financial support.
Right, and so finding the support.
But we don't know what that cost is gonna be.
Well, they'll, that'll be the problem. They'll investigate it and get a cost on it, if it, if it was doable, yes.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, on this topic, I was speaking with Lieutenant Marcus, and because I have a similar situation happening in my ward, and he said that the state will not move forward without a resolution from the city. Not, not even like a study or nothing. We, almost like that final figure is an unknown, until we commit, how could, you know, it's almost like the state.
Just listen to what he read there. What he read there was just enough for me to pick up that they needed a resolution for the loss.
Should I give this to you?
Give it to Yolanda. Pass it, Yolanda, you pass it up to the Public Works Director.
We'll send it to Public Works and.
And then with the, with the, because Lieutenant Marcus already way of it, correct?
Yes, he's the one forwarded to me.
Right, and the Law Department followed with that, followed with that. Okay? And then we can, once they get some type of a, a ballpark figure on it, then we can pass a resolution for support and all that. So let them do some research on it first, okay? All right, 'cause I, I concur, it does need it there.
Yeah, those two intersect, in fact, the Rowway intersection and Almora intersection, it's set up for that already.
Right, right.
Just need the line.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, Mr. President.
I have one thing for.
All right, now, I'm not gonna go forward, because next thing you know, everybody else wanna get a second time around, I'm not gonna go a second time around. I'm not gonna go a second time around. You, you, you finished?
Yes, Mr. President.
Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, guys, I'm not gonna go a second, everybody else is gonna be going back around. I don't wanna go, no, I'm not gonna do that.
But I just wanna.